I haven't thanked anything. That's right, she did text us.
Yeah, she didn't text me.
That's okay.
All ships, she texted the mayor.
I'm glad she texted somebody.
I think that was Jen.
Oops, gotta take a picture of this right here. All right, Mr. Nissley.
Now that, does that mean I'm gonna take the trip?
Little gray.
Little gray.
A lot of gray.
Oh.
There was a little gray, I was just saying.
One bridge.
Buddies here.
Sort of, not just the other.
Next one, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
That's usually very good. That's true, something.
Well, yeah.
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, she's definitely, she's out of here. That's what just. Oh, it's like an individual. Oh, that's.
I did it individually.
I did too.
I've never done it in a trip.
Oh, you have?
I think so. Did like you, there, I feel like there was more than one. Maybe if you came the first meeting, maybe if you.
Make it up.
I don't remember either.
See, I remember.
I know I have a picture of you somewhere.
I had one dying before you.
Yeah, so was I.
Not by the mayor.
I think we all did it, I think it's, I think that especially. I think that's more than I know. I mean, I was thinking about, with you, I would, if I said it was now and I said.
I just.
But for a first time.
You don't have.
Yeah.
We're ready. Okay. First thing we have to do is we have to put that.
Wow. Throwing down. Welcome everyone to the December eighteenth meeting of the Goshen Common Council. The special guest tonight, who is filling in because our, our person that was scheduled to be here was not able to make it. So could you please say your name for us?
Ainsley.
Ainsley, Ainsley has agreed, oh, I'm sorry, what school do you go to and which grade are you in?
I'm in fourth grade and I go to Woodland Elementary School.
Awesome. Okay, awesome. So we're gonna turn and face the flag and we're gonna put, take our right hand and put it over our heart, okay? And then you're gonna help us lead the pledge of allegiance. So you'll just start us and then we're all gonna join in. So you just say the first sentence, I pledge allegiance to the flag and then we'll join in, okay? You ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ainsley. All right. Thank you very much. Ainsley, Ainsley is here because she's helping celebrate an achievement from her grandpa today, which we will get to later in our meeting. So thank you very much for the help all the way through the meeting, Ainsley. All right. Yeah, good job.
Nice job.
All right. Clerk Treasurer Aguirre, could you call the role today?
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Nissley.
Here.
Counselor Peel. Counselor Perez.
Here.
Counselor Reitzsacker.
Here.
Counselor Schrock.
Here.
Counselor, Council President Weddell.
Here.
Youth Advisor Velazquez Valdez.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the November thirteenth minutes. What is the pleasure of the council?
Second.
We have a motion by Nicely and a second by Perez, all in favor.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. The next item on our agenda is the approval of tonight's meeting agenda. What is the pleasure of the council on this matter?
Move to approve as, as presented.
We have a motion from King and a second from Mr. Reitzsacker. I barely recognize you, that's the problem, the new face here, yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimously as well. The first item on our action agenda is a public hearing. Council President Weddell, would you introduce that item?
Would you like to be privileged at the floor first?
Yes, I would, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to the council on a matter that is not on our agenda tonight? Hearing, oh, I'm sorry, please proceed. If you could say your name and sign in.
Terry Hartman. Very briefly, I should have said something about a month ago, but I really did appreciate the, the Christmas light parade that we had in Goshen. It was a great event to take the grandkids to, of course, anytime you throw candy at them, it's not gonna be a bad event. But anyway, whoever organized that and planned it, that was, it was well done and I just hope it can be expanded for next year. But thanks to whoever was responsible for that, I'm not real sure, but.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. I will pass it on to Downtown Goshen Inc. and all of the city departments who helped with that as well. So make sure that they hear your good words. Okay, we are ready to move on to our action items. Council President Weddell, could you introduce item number one? We'll introduce the item, then we will open for a hearing with and ask for public comment and then we will move into the first reading.
Clerk Treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-one seventy-six by title only.
Ordinance fifty-one seventy-six, additional appropriations.
I move for the passive ordinance fifty-one seventy-six on first reading.
We have a motion by Weddell and a second by Nissley. This will now open the public comment section, I'm sorry.
Deputy Weaver has a short presentation.
I, I thought we were gonna go to public comments and then the presentation? Okay. Are there any comments or questions from the audience before we move on to the staff presentation?
Just quick point of order.
Thank you.
Apologize. Mr. Stegelman. Bodie. I just want to clarify how we do this. In the past, the mayor would hold a public hearing. Or, because that's what we have here, public hearing. Would anyone like to speak? Gavels that down, then we would introduce the ordinance. Is that different than what we have in front of us today? Councilwoman King, because you were kind of looking at me like.
Yeah. And also I was, I was just thinking, even if we went to public comment, it would be helpful for them to hear the presentation before they gave comment. So either one of those.
I just want to clarify before we get too deep into this.
Yeah, the ordinance has been presented, so, yeah, at any point I would suggest a public hearing.
And the public hearing is different than public comment on the ordinance or not. And that, that's what I'm getting at. When we've had public hearings before, for whatever reason, the mayor would, this now opens the public hearing for ordinance such and such, would anyone like to speak? No one does, so closes it and then we go to reading the ordinance.
That's correct. And public hearings are a time that the public has the right to speak.
Correct.
When the council opens up to public comment, that's discretionary on the part of the council. That's something that the council does over and beyond.
Right.
What the statute requires.
And so with this being an additional appropriation, we're statutorily required to have a public hearing, is that correct?
Right, I would gavel it in and gavel it out like you mentioned.
Okay, so should we do that before or after we read the ordinance?
I don't think it matters.
Okay. So then after we pass the ordinance on first reading, then you are gonna have to hold a public hearing separate of us reading the ordinance in and out.
Okay.
Well, I would suggest a public hearing prior to the vote.
That's what I would say too.
I was gonna open the public hearing now.
Okay.
And then we will return to the council for.
Okay.
Is that acceptable? Protocol?
So, yeah.
Is there anybody now opening the public hearing segment of this ordinance? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to the current ordinance that's been proposed? Okay.
So gavel it out. Now this closes the.
This closes the hearing. We will now move back to the council for discussion and a presentation from Deputy Clerk Treasurer Weaver.
Okay, so the term presentation sounds a whole lot more formal than what I've got right here. But just, this is mostly a reminder and explanation to the council. And appropriation again is permission to spend money that we currently have. And additional appropriation is basically adding to that appropriation that we already set at the, well, actually at the end of 2022 for this year's budget. We basically have three different things here. The first one is an additional appropriation in the building department. This one came about because we have some certain positions that, for which their salaries are paid from two different funds. So in this particular one, part of it is paid from residential lease and part of it is paid from the budget, the, the building department budget in the general fund. So it so happens that this past year, we budgeted for the residential lease portion. We did not budget for the building department portion and here at the end of the year, we're seeing that we are going to need a little bit of extra money to spend to make sure that we have this, this salary covered. So if, if there are any quick questions on that, I can answer those or we can move on to the other ones. Okay, so for public safety, low it again, as I explained in the memo, that one, that fund is usually police and fire pensions and large purchases. In this case, we have a new police vehicle coming in. The cost of this is basically to cover the cost of the vehicle and the required upfitting that Carl completes in his garage. So the total amount here, sixty thousand dollars, actually would probably cost us more if we were to send it out. So one way that we kind of keep some cost savings by sending things to our central garage there. Finally, the redevelopment fund is looking for an additional appropriation to, actually for a purchase that they already made. This purchase was to be funded by a TIF fund, but this piece of property is not yet in the TIF district. They need to amend the district before they can pay for it out of the TIF. So for now redevelopment is paying it out of their own fund. And then sometime next year, the TIF is going to reimburse the redevelopment fund this money. But to be able to spend it this year, we do need to budget a little bit more. And then next year, that will be paid back.
I have a question about the redevelopment, just kind of how that works. So essentially, this is a loan, right, to redevelopment? And also, if they have to amend the TIF, that has to come through here, too, right?
So I believe both answers are technically yes. They have the money to purchase, redevelopment commission has the money to purchase it, but it wasn't appropriated. And because it is not currently in the existing TIF, we can't just do it. So the money would be loaned from the redevelopment commission to the redevelopment commission to purchase it. Assuming then that property gets annexed, well, not annexed, but placed into the TIF, then the TIF could then reimburse the redevelopment general fund, so to speak. But so, yes, and then also, I believe the answer is also yes, where the city council has to then approve changing the boundaries would be what we would be doing.
So basically, I'm asking Bodie. I mean, it feels like it's in the wrong order. That's all. That's all I want to ask. It feels like they put the cart before the horse, but I just want to hear a legal explanation.
Yeah, I'm not aware of this specific transaction, but I think that money could be spent out of either fund to purchase the property, but because it's not in the TIF district that funds relative to that district cannot be used to purchase the property.
And so Counselwoman King.
Where is this?
No, it's not. So I want to give some context. I think that'll help. Okay. The address is 208 West Washington. So if you think of the farmer's market, the alley that we've been wanting to improve, River Race Drive, you have 210 West Washington, which is Bixler Chiropractic, which we purchased, I'm going to say, two years ago, maybe. And there is a house 208 West Washington, which lies in between that house and the city parking lot. And that individual came and wondered if there was an opportunity for the city, for the redevelopment commission to purchase that. I believe they came, I believe the owner came to redevelopment commission or inquired. And because we want to improve that alleyway all the way to Washington Street, to actually make it so it's a two lane road rather than just that alley, we felt like it would be in the best interest to purchase that property. So we wouldn't negatively impact that property while we're redoing the alleyway. And so, yes, it's not.
Doesn't seem ideal in order. And I'm not objecting, I'm not objecting to the project.
Yeah, and he was in the timing of how they came to us. You're right. So you're absolutely right. Normally, you would do it the other way around, but because of the timing where they came to us, that's why it's kind of backwards. So.
Will that property stay a rental?
That I can't answer right now because I can't, I I'm not sure if Dustin would even know if that property would be directly affected upon the completion of that alleyway or not. He may not even know. But it might be one of those properties that may stay rental, may not, depending on the condition. And then depending on the effect it would have, it may or may not be sold again. Dustin, does that sound reasonable?
I think it's, it's just too early to know what will happen with that property. You know, we, we don't need it for the alleyway, but there's also the potential for expansion of the parking lot that's on the corner. So there's a lot of opportunities with this property.
Good answer.
Yeah, I just want an assurance from, I mean, Bodie, you don't have any problem with this in terms of, it seems like a couple steps in advance.
No, I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to hear that.
Jeffrey, I want to back up to your very first statements, just so that I understand and make sure everybody's clear on this. So the funds that we're getting here are from something, some other account, same account, but another category that we budgeted last year? Are we taking it from funds that we saved from the previous year that we carried over?
So I think the question you're asking is, are we adding or like spending extra money? Or are we taking it from one place to put it somewhere else?
Correct.
Okay, so no, this, what this really is, is a salary that half of it is spent from residential lease. The other half is spent from the general fund. We just basically didn't budget enough in the building department for this, these wages.
Okay, so I think I understand. Is it in order for my mind to close this loop, is there an account that we could put on these that it came from? So we have a debit and a credit, so to speak?
Sort of. The.
So we know exactly where it came from? Because we either during the budget time, we, we didn't miss out, we didn't misallocate. We just, we have to guess during the budget anyways. I mean, it's a, it's a good, it's a good guess, but we didn't use money somewhere else. And now we can take it from here and put it here.
We're essentially adding to the budget in this case. So we'd basically be pulling from the cash, the cash balance here. So yes, the.
On every one of these?
Yes, in each one of these here. So we're, we're essentially using the cash balance that we already have in the specific funds and allowing a little bit more of that to be spent.
Okay, so each year, the city does a very good job of only spending like 95% of the budget or less, right?
Yeah.
So that money accumulates into the account. And that's the money that we're going back to grab now, so to speak, to put in here.
Yes.
We're using those funds and not something that we budgeted out of the, whatever it was, 45 million or whatever it was last year?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
So we could, I mean, because of that 95%, I mean, we could in theory go to other full-time wages in the general fund and pull little bits from there. But that's almost like taking a little bit of money from other departments. And we would have a whole bunch of people who are not happy with us on that one. And so this is pretty much just, it's an error. And so correcting an error here, which we should have budgeted that additional 40,000 there.
Okay, and the same, same for, except for the redevelopment's going to wash out eventually anyway. So I'm not worried about that one. So 40, 85, there's 100,000 that we're adding to the budget last year.
Yes. And then the, the public safety, that's more a case of this is an opportunity that showed up. It's there. We're going to go ahead and buy it because it's, it's available to us now and with the market, the way it is right now to find, well, prices keep going up. And right now, we're finding something that's within a price range that we like.
Sure.
So that's, that's mostly the reason for that.
I just wanted to make sure that I understood it and everybody else understood what's happening here. So.
Yeah, okay. So next week, when I come back and say that we're basically looking at a bunch of category transfers and all that, that is not increasing the budget. That's just moving things around.
Budgetary, whatever you want to call it.
Exactly, where this one is.
Yep.
Increasing the budget. Yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Additional questions or comments from the council? Councilors, are you prepared to vote on the first reading of this ordinance?
We are.
Okay. All in favor of the motion that is presented before you?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously. Since it did pass unanimously, would you like to proceed with the second reading?
We would. With the clerk treasurer, please read ordinance 5176 by title only.
Ordinance 5176, additional appropriations.
I move for the passage of ordinance 5176 on second and final reading.
We have a motion by Weddle and a second by Perez. Any additional questions or comments from the council? Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to this? Councilors, are you prepared to vote on the second reading?
We are.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes unanimously on second reading as well. Thank you.
Who was the second on that motion?
Perez.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to the fun part of our evening. We have a number of presentations for a service to the city of Goshen. The first person that I would like to honor tonight is Bethany Campbell. So Bethany, if you would like to come forward. All right. Set this right here. So Bethany has served on the Board of Zoning and Appeals from July 2021 through December of this year. And what I'm told is that you've enjoyed getting to know your foil of board members, gaining knowledge of city zoning ordinances, and having opportunities to meet and hear from members of our community. You've been proud to serve on the board, and you encourage more women to apply for appointment in years to come. Amen. Okay, Bethany, your award this evening says, presented with gratitude to Bethany Campbell in appreciation for your service as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, July 2021 to December 2023, with my signature. Congratulations. We appreciate it.
Just a great opportunity. I enjoyed my time.
All right. Thank you so much. And the next person on my agenda, I think I might have a different order here. Okay, Michael Potuck. Michael, would you come forward? Hi, Mike. You too. So you've been serving on the Board of Zoning Appeals also from January 2021 through December of this year, during which time you gained a broader perspective of the effort and thoughtfulness that it takes to make the city safe, orderly, and efficient for residents and businesses. You express gratitude for the opportunity to serve and would like to offer thanks to the planning department, fellow board members, and members of our community. And we thank you as well. Your plaque says, presented with gratitude to Mike Potuck in appreciation for your service as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals, January 2021 to December of 2023. Thank you.
I don't have anything else, except for my son was asking me what I was doing tonight. And he said, what, what, what are they giving you? And I said, well, it's probably going to be a plaque. It sounds like he said, what's that? I said, well, it's kind of like a trophy. He said, whoa, cool. That's kind of funny, seven-year-old perspective.
You're welcome. All right. Andrea. Is Andrea Johnson here tonight? Okay. Well, I will go ahead and read about Andrea. Andrea has served on the Redevelopment Commission from January of 2018 through December of this year. Over her time, she actively engaged to understand the variety of city projects on the commission involved and developed a passion for preserving quality of place projects and in housing. Her dedication is greatly appreciated, and she will be missed. So special thanks to Andrea.
And I'll echo that, too. She's done an excellent job. I told her at the last meeting, I may not have voted for her for that position the very first time, but I was happily able to vote for her each time thereafter because she, she demonstrated doing an excellent job on that board.
Thank you, counselor. Appreciate that. All right, Alberto. I just want to thank you for your many years of service and present you with this key to the city. The plaque reads, this key to the city of Goshen is presented on December 18th, 2023, with gratitude to Alberto Perez Jr. for four years of service to our community on the Goshen City Council. The essence of leadership lies in fostering a sense of community and unity. Thank you for your dedication and serving with an open mind and a full heart. With great respect, me, Gina.
Well, to the public, thank you for coming to meetings and for sharing your thoughts and your opinions and helping the council and myself to be accountable to you and to the work that you want us to do. To department heads, y'all are amazing. So thanks for all your work and for the, just the commitment that you have every day for, you know, meeting the needs of your employees and for the people that live in those communities. To the clerk treasurer, thank you, sir, for the work you do and for also supporting your staff and doing that great work. I just want to also thank now the, my fellow counselors for your work. We agreed a lot of times. So I want to start with that as a strength, that we did really good work together. And there were a few things along the way that we disagreed, but we worked with them respectfully and honorably with one another. And so I just greatly appreciate that. Whenever I have these opportunities to learn new things, I take them as the information, the experience for the next thing, which is to help the community better understand the work that city council does. And so that's my task these next number of years, just to educate more people about what city council does, what commissions do, and hopefully work to get more folks to be involved and to fill those seats as we always want them to do. And not just on those days when it gets a little hard and we're just not exactly sure which way to go. But the, the regular things make for a great city. So I want to thank you all for your service. And also to the mayor for the work that you're doing already. And may it go well for you these next four years.
Thank you, Alberto.
Julia. It's also my honor to present you with the key to the city. The key to the city is presented to Julia King on December 18th, 2023, with much gratitude for eight years of service to our community on the Goshen City Council. Again, the essence of leadership lies in fostering a sense of community and unity. Thank you for your dedication and serving with an open mind and a full heart. With great respect, Gina.
I would just say that this has been truly just an amazing adventure, these eight years. And I am just immensely grateful for the opportunity to serve Goshen. And like Alberto, I would say, I have learned something of value from everyone that comes into these chambers, whether your staff here regularly informing us about important issues or the public coming in and expressing your concerns or sharing your stories with us and my colleagues and two mayors now. It's just a great experience and I'm grateful. And I would say the same as Alberto also, that you know, going forward, I know that I have a lot of valuable lessons and hope to share them with people and help people understand local government and and also how it interacts with other, other levels of government. So thank you, all of you.
Appreciate it. Finally, this evening, we have an award for some legendary service to the city of Goshen, 44 years, from Larry Kyle. Larry, I believe your, your colleague is going to share a little bit. So Charlie, are you, are you on deck? Or you, Jim, there you are. I was, I was like, I don't know who's speaking this evening, but if you would.
Hello, thank you. So for those of you who don't know me, I'm Jim Kurzmann, I'm wastewater superintendent. And I have the honor of introducing Larry, Larry Kyle. So he started his journey with the city in 1979, right? So last month, on November 19th, he celebrated his 44th year with the city. Makes it even more special is Larry has the highest seniority of all employees right now at the city. And then. A couple more days, yeah, yeah. So his final day with the city is December 28th. And that is 16,110 days of employment. So we always, a little wastewater humor here, we say we take crap off of everybody. December 28th is your last day of taking crap off of anybody, Larry. You can.
I've been giving it. I live in the town.
Please show up to the meeting.
So congratulations.
Thanks, sir.
We're going to miss you.
I doubt that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Charlie, did you want to add anything before?
No, it's just been a privilege to be around Larry. He's always served us very graciously. He's never. He's never complained about all the time he puts in. He works six days a week, because that lab has to go six days a week. And we do have some fill-ins for him, and the one that we've got to take his place, she's got big shoes to fill, but she's doing a wonderful job, so. The city's in good hands.
So Larry, it is my tremendous honor to present you with a key to the city. The key to the city is presented on December 18th, 2023, with gratitude to Larry Kyle for 44 years of service to the Goshen City Wastewater Department. There's no greater commitment than ensuring the health and safety of our community. Thank you for your dedication and for serving with an open mind and a full heart.
Really, I really don't have much to say, other than I want to thank all you folks for letting me serve the city. I've, I've tried my best, and I, I hope that my replacement, I've taught her well. I hope she, she does well for you guys. I'm going to miss being there. We've got a good group of guys out there at wastewater that I appreciate all you and, and you folks keep doing the best that you can, and thank you all for this honor.
I made sure that they gave you the key after we've changed the locks.
That's good. I thought it was to the bathroom.
And when you do that, four years after high school, though? You could have had 48 years here if you wouldn't have been traveling Europe or whatever.
Oh, my goodness.
Worked for, for the car dealership.
Thank you, Larry.
Charlie just pointed out to me that between Charlie, Larry, and Jim, we have, did you say 102 years of service, Charlie? Okay, so we have an amazing wastewater department, so thank you all for your dedication and your service. That does bring us to our elected officials report. Are there any official, elected officials reports this evening?
Redevelopment Commission met last week. We had had some tentative approval to hire a consulting firm to look into greater detail the extension of the Winona Trail path behind Waterford Elementary School. We talked about that briefly last meeting in relation to Cherry, Cherry Creek. So that's moving forward. The school system is still going to have to give final approval on the property, but we want to look into the feasibility of that. We sold a property on Third Street, 417, South Third Street. It's a really narrow property in between two other homeowners. And we had initially asked those two homeowners if they had any interest, which they didn't. And then we had someone come forward with a full asking price for the lot, and they have a very, very unique building structure they want to put there that I think will really fit nicely with the property and the surrounding area. So we're excited about that. And then we just had a couple change orders for the work on Douglas surrounding the proposed aerial cycle works with all the road improvements along there, so.
Thank you, President Weddell. Any additional reports for this evening?
I don't necessarily have a specific report, but I know the youth advisor council isn't here this evening, probably on whatever. But I just want to continue to encourage the council and the mayor as the, the time goes to support this program. It's wonderful, and I, I appreciate all of the young people that we're engaging on. I think it was just a beautiful testament to what Goshen is about when all these kids came. Like at the last meeting, it was just wonderful. And just as a side note, our youth advisor has been admitted to Yale University. And so she is going to do great things. And as we have for our other youth advisor counselors, that they come back. My kid didn't, but we hope that they continue to do, do good work. And hopefully, this experience that they've had will impact them as they go forward and they make change in their communities. And if they do come back, that's, that's been a proud thing for me to support the youth advisor council and, and hope that you all will, too.
I'd say our youth advisors have had very successful college careers. A lot of them have been, you know, and, and success post-college, too, so.
I think almost every youth advisor, if not everyone, has gone to an Ivy League school.
Purdue, Ball State, Harvard, University of Virginia, and now Yale.
Okay.
IU.
IU. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, it's a great program.
Yeah.
All right.
Talking about our school system, let's congratulate Jim DeBois, our new superintendent, Goshen Community Schools.
It's fantastic news for our community. We're very fortunate.
Second.
I can have a motion a second. All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you.